The October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three Winchester Planning Board Meeting. We've got a full house tonight. So why don't we, oh, I should let you know, we are being recorded on Zoom and via Wind Cam. Thank you much Wind Cam. If you do not wish to appear on the recording, please turn off your video and your audio. Why don't we do a roll call vote? Carrie Leighton.
Present.
Nick Rosettos.
Present.
Eeching Scott.
Present.
Sally Dale. I know Sally's here somewhere. Sally. Well, I'm Dejarius. We'll grab Sally when she gets back to her computer. Uh, we have, oh, there she is. Hey Sally, say hi to everyone. Are you present Sally? Sally, can you hear us? Okay, I think Sally is having. Sally, you are now muted.
Yes, I'm here now. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Seven seventeen. Sorry, sorry.
Okay, uh, so we also have with us Taylor Herman Town Planner. Nancy Polkari, our Recording Secretary, and of course Wind Cam. Thank you much. So this evening, we have a special meeting where we are going to be talking with the people who have volunteered for the, what are we calling it? The zoning advisory committee. And this is a committee that's being formed to advise the planning board on upcoming zoning changes for the North Main Street Corridor and for the town's compliance with the MBTA three A multi-family, I think I call, yeah, I think it's all multi-family housing law. And we have Taylor, do we have everyone who is on our list of volunteers with us this evening?
Yes, all but, all but one, and the one is going to join later on. So I'm pretty sure everyone's going to be here.
Okay, excellent. So why don't we very quickly start with an update? And then we'll dive into the, into the interview. So let's see, is any updates from the board? Okay, well, I'll lead off. Taylor and I met with our consultants for the economic feasibility analysis for increasing the inclusionary percentage of inclusionary units in the three A overlay districts yesterday. These are the consultants who worked at Lexington on their report. And for those who are wondering what this is all about, MBTA three A has a limit of ten percent inclusionary zoning for housing by right, multi-family housing in the three A districts. And currently in our center business district, we have, we can go up to fifteen percent inclusionary. And the state wants communities which to go above the ten percent to show that that will not present an economic obstacle to development. And so we met yesterday to discuss Winchester's plans with our consultants who are being funded via the state. And that is being overseen by Mass Housing Partnership. So.
I have a question.
Yep.
What does it mean fifty, what is fifteen percent inclusionary versus ten percent inclusionary? What does that mean?
So when, if you build residences in the center business district, if you build more than, if you build six or more units, ten percent of those units have to be deeded affordable at the eighty percent AMI level. If you build more than twenty-five units, an additional five percent of the total have to be affordable at the hundred and twenty percent AMI level. And so we are trying to determine whether it is economically feasible for us to retain that sort of a percentage in the three A overlay zoning. And we have every confidence that we'll be able to do so because I believe Lexington had a much more stringent requirements for their, they were all at eighty percent AMI, and they were found to be not economic obstacle to development. And our five percent is at a hundred and twenty percent, which is actually easier for developers to meet. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
So just as a follow-up, Nick, the phrase inclusionary zoning is used in our bylaws to refer to deed restricted, approved by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. I forget the acronym now. As deed restricted affordable units, inclusionary zoning equals that.
Okay. That's helpful.
Great.
So Taylor, do you have any updates you wanted to share with us?
I don't think so. Nope.
Okay. The, oh, well, the other thing is that the process for moving forward for the, for the RFP, for the economic development person that we're getting from, I guess, ARPA funds is started. So that's still in the planning effort. So that will unfurl as we go along. And we'd really like to have a member of the planning board part of that process and drafting the RFP. So if anyone would like to become part of that effort, please reach out to Taylor and let him know. Should be interesting. So why don't we just dive right into the main event? So thank, first of all, I'd like to welcome everyone who's here, everyone who's volunteering to join us for the zoning advisory committee. This is a really important part of getting community input in our zoning process. As I mentioned, we're looking at our revitalization of the North Main Street Corridor, which we've been working on with form in place for the last couple of years. And they have provided us with a number of fits of how we can, what the future developments along the North Main Street Corridor would look like. And hopefully, some of you were able to see their presentation at last week's planning board meeting. If not, that's available via Wind Cam and also on the Wind Cam's YouTube channel. And the other section, of course, is our, how we're going to comply with the state's multifamily zoning initiatives. So we have, I, you know, we have a great group of people. And so I thought we might start off, Taylor, did you set up an order or things, or are we just going to go sort of in alphabetical order?
So I do have, have a list which was randomized. And but I do want to suggest two ways that we can do this, just to make sure that it's, that it's streamlined. Each person should have, I mean, let's try to make sure that each person has no more than seven minutes, just so that we stay on, on, on track. And there, I think it's going to be up to the board whether, how you want to conduct each interview. Do you want to have questions for each individual based off of their introduction and their, 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 the pamphlet that they have submitted to us? How, how, how do you suggest we, we do each one for each person in a seven-minute timeframe?
But I wonder if we can hold off the questions to the end, although that's, I guess, that's one approach, is to hold off the questions to the end and, and maybe shoot for five minutes and it'll go to seven.
It's okay with me.
Are there some standard questions that folks, everybody gets?
I don't think we, we, this is a pretty informal process, so. Yeah, I, I think, maybe, maybe if we allow just a couple, just one or two questions after each person has spoken, just so that, you know, if you have something that you don't want to forget and ask, I think that would be useful.
Yeah, can I, can I, can I suggest that, um, some of the points that each speaker touch on is, because there, there are a lot of points were very well made in their applications and cover letters. But the big questions that I have are the degree to which they understand or are able and willing and able to dive in to understand the complexities of zoning, number one. And number two, are they committed to giving us the time that it's going to take between now and the Springtown meeting? Those are my two critical questions right now. So I'm sure that those will be answered in due course. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think we were looking at a meeting about once over three or so weeks. Or, I mean, that was the time commitment for a couple hours.
That was, that was in the, that was in the application process, and that was already stated. So I would assume that everybody who had applied is already cognizant of that, that, so I would, I would skip that. But I, I would be inclined to ask each applicant to address their perspective on, on some of the issues that this MBTA three A, as well as Main Street would touch on, which would be housing, transit, economic vitality, sustainability, and preservation of historic and cultural resources. Those, those sorts of issues that sort of we're constantly thinking about. If, if each applicant can sort of address those things, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, it'd be nice if they had standardized questions. I like the fact that you brought those up early and everyone can answer the same ones.
Okay, so going forward, maybe we'll have everyone, our applicants, or just give a a brief introduction to yourself, and then maybe we can remember all those questions and prompt you if you've forgotten, or you want us to prompt you with those questions. So Taylor, do you want to start us off, please?
Yep, so, so this evening, the order, just so that everyone knows, and I'll remind everyone as it goes, we're going to be going Lance, John, Tommy, Steve, Wenji, Marion, Somya, and apologize if I mispronounce people's names. Please correct me if I do. So I think we can just kick right off with, with Lance. Thank you for joining us tonight. Please give a brief introduction. I'm actually going to stop sharing my screen. We have your, all the information that, that you've, that you've submitted. So a brief introduction.
Hank, Hank has this.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Hank, you are on the list at, between Steve and Wenji. Sorry, so you're one, two, three, four, fifth.
Thank you, thank you, Charlie, because I think I have to leave before eight o'clock. Hopefully, I will be able to give you guys an introduction before then.
I'll make sure that you are before eight o'clock. Lance, floor is yours.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm Lance Fransback.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm Lance Friendsback. Uh, I was listening to your questions. Do I understand the uh? The, uh, do I understand the complexity and the history of the area? I think the short answer would be yes. Uh, I looked up a little earlier this. Evening back in some of the papers, uh, uh, I've been discussing this issue of rezoning the Center Business. Center Business District, which at North Main Street probably since two thousand and five. I was a little shocked to see that number. Uh, Peter Van Aken and I ran for the planning board in two thousand and five, because we felt they weren't doing anything with this, with the whole area. Uh, it took us a couple of years to hire a planner and then a, a couple of years to update half the master plan. And one of the things that fell out of that in the twenty-ten effort was the. Realization that nobody had paid much attention at all to rezoning the Central Business District or North Main Street. And uh, from probably twenty-ten on till twenty-fifteen, we worked on doing the Center Business District, and the idea at the time was to take. The lessons learned from that work in the Center Business District and extend them up uh, the, to GBD, GBD two and GBD three. Uh, but during that time, we had a whole slew of issues. Uh, the Village Center Overlay District that had been put in. The late nineteen nineties, early two thousands wasn't working at all. Uh, there were several. Programs to rehabilitate particular buildings, Children's Creative Center up there set off a major riot. Uh, of hearings at the time, so the um, it's been a long time coming. Uh, I'm very pleased to see that this board has. Set about to try to deal with it because it's an, an underappreciated and very valuable part of the town and the town center. Uh, and there's been a sort of a underlying assumption that what we see today is gonna continue up there. Uh, and that has not proven in many cases. You know, we thought the Center Business, Center Business District would extend up that road. Along came the malls, and along came Amazon, and that area has changed fairly radically, as well as the uh, residential communities, so. Uh, you have specific questions about the history of this, I could certainly provide probably more information that the board would want on that issue, but that. I think uh, you know, you have a resource there. Very delicately balanced these days between, you know, convenience, retail services, residential areas and a. And I looked at a corridor that was historically a machine shop corridor to support the Bexham Cobb factory and all the other factories that were lined up along the railroad lines. Uh, at that period, so it's, it's a fascinating area, but a very difficult one. Uh, it's gonna be a very difficult one to get easily rezoned. Uh, I'll stop there. Uh, dear, or Taylor, do you have specific questions?
I don't have any specific ones, but I know you quite well, Lance, so I'm probably not the person. Lance and I met a long time ago, uh, when I was approaching the planning board for other issues, um but um. Yicheng, you had a series of questions that you'd hoped would be answered. Uh, do you wanna bring some of those over?
Yeah, um, I think Lance, you have a very unique perspective because you have been really deep into the, the, the. Planning and the zoning and, and on the select board, on the planning board. So i- in these past decades, um, you've seen the, the growth or the non-growth. Um, what do you see immediately um as opportunities for us here at the MBTA three A as well as? Um, that's like what, what aspects of economic growth or, or transit or land, land use or any of these. Issues or historical preservation, like what, what are some of the things that we could be? Getting meatier things out of it, or, or low-hanging fruits, or things that we could really, really get here in the next. This, I mean, this is a huge zoning thing that we're, we're embarking, so what, what are some of the, the good, goodness that we can get?
By, by re, you mean by rezoning the North Main area?
Yes, North Main as well as the MBTA three A, yeah.
Well, the, uh, I mean, I guess the uh MBTA three A won't really make a huge difference to the Central Business District at this time. Uh, because you're almost, most of the, most of the CBD regulations in place today mimic. What the MBTA is asking for, so I don't think that's gonna cause a, maybe wrong, you may have other things in mind, but. Uh, I think complying with the MBTA requirements won't make a huge difference. I think the biggest challenges going up North Main Street are going to be. Uh, figuring out what future uses are likely to be viable up there. I think we've had a long history in town of looking at it and saying. Uh, well, we should rezone it to do the same thing it's done in the past. And then, as I mentioned earlier. You know, finding that the malls ate the downtown and a lot of the businesses along North Main Street. Uh, then Amazon and the internet came along and ate a lot of the smaller retail. Uh, businesses that were also along North Main, so we've, we've now had a very series of very small parcels. Very hard to assemble that back up to residential areas. And in the past, when we've suggested that they be rezoned. Or that there've been large developments in there, the neighborhoods have come unglued. Uh, and the, the complexity and the type of neighborhoods up there have changed radically. It used to be almost entirely blue-collar. Industrial workers who were in the mills from there on up into Woburn, and that's changed. It's uh, uh, it's no longer kind of a. A small, quiet neighborhood area, so uh. It's gonna require some vision about what could be developed. For commercial uses on that line, and housing is an obvious use and an obvious need, but uh. You've got a problem with anything that's very large, then immediately overshadows the neighborhoods and generates lots of, lots of concern and resistance. And if you put commercial in there, you have to be able to zone for something that's large enough to accommodate what people think are financially viable. Uh, developments today, so it's gonna be a very tricky, uh, very tricky issue. I, I don't have any quick visions, but I presume that's what we're gonna work on.
Yep, yep. Glad I have your institutional knowledge, for sure.
Thanks, uh, Taylor, you're, you're keeping an eye on the clock, right?
Uh, yep, would you like me to be more specific about it?
Yeah, we just, I just wanna make sure that, that we get to Hank before he has to lose.
So tell, so tell me I've run out of time, that's good.
We have all night. No, we don't. Um, any other, any further questions for, for Lance?
I just have one comment to say that I think it's great, Lance, that you're willing to help out with this effort. And your institutional knowledge, as Yicheng said, is incredibly valuable. Um, and we thank you for applying to be on the Z-Rack.
Oh, that's gracious. I, uh, friends have said I've demonstrated a consistent and persistent lack of good judgment about how to use my evening time.
Well, I disagree, even though they're your friends.
Well, as we've often said, we're the funnest board in town, so um, it's always, it's always a good uh. Use of time. Um, okay, so um, why don't we move on to our uh. Our next person in line, and that is Taylor, am I correct? That's John Levitt?
That's correct, and what I will do is I will raise my hand at the five-minute mark.
Okay.
So, thank you for joining us tonight, John. Uh, please introduce yourself and.
Hello, folks, my name is John Levitt. I'm a resident of Winchester. I live at one fifty-three Cambridge Street. I also own a building in downtown Winchester. I have watched nothing happen for the last ten years in downtown Winchester. Um, that's one of my reasons why I would like to be a volunteer on this committee. I don't know whether or not I have the insight into the background of a planner. But I do understand what has happened in other MBTA communities. Um, if I wanna just go to other towns, which I've taken pictures of. Lagoon Square and Somerville, um, no. Uh, it, it's the, all of the building that has been done is right next to the train station. Uh, Tufts, right next to the train station. Um, if I look at. Even over at um. Uh, Wellington Circle, it's all right next to the train station. We're going up North Main Street, and I understand that this is a plan that the committee brought forth. I don't understand why we're, we're eliminating buildings on Thompson Street, which is right next to the train station. It's access to. The train station. We're moving up to. A half a mile away. To try and. Comply with the MBTA regulation? That's the reason why I would like to be on the committee.
Thank you. Are there any questions for John?
Um, yeah, I, I, I um really wanna thank you for applying, John, and I. I know at your perspective as one of the few landlords actually in the CBD, because there are very few. Um, housing y- options within the Central Business District. Right, and you're, you're one of the few buildings that actually has any housing in it, even though it is zoned for housing. So I, I feel like that perspective is really crucial, um, and I um. Would, am curious just to um, how you see um, economic vitality. Um, or sort of um, livelihood of the CBD and how, how that. And you, you spoke upon, upon it and that, you know, it. Being sent, being close to the, the train is important. Um, what, what is your perspective as a, as a landlord in the Central Business District, and how, how could it be improved?
Well, apparently this is for North Main Street, but there's a lot other things that I'm, I'm looking at in reference to. Thompson Street. All them buildings down Thompson Street that are right next to the train station, why aren't they being addressed? I've been told where the, all the bank buildings on the other side of the common, they've all been eliminated. Why are they eliminated? Because of a plan that was being, being put forth? Is the plan put forth for? The, the people of the community are to make some. Something that really has nothing to do with the community.
My understanding is that it is a suggestion right now. It is not an actual plan, um, that is, is. Uh, but, but there are suggestions about eliminating certain buildings. So that, that is what the Z-Rack is, is gonna work through.
Well, what I would like to do is I'd like to be, change that direction. And I'd like to bring it back downtown. In, in other words, from, if you go Gas Station Alley, okay? In other words, there's two or three locations, and, and that's considered not Main Street. In other words, there's two or three locations that could have residential on it, which would allow people. To go to the train station, but beyond that, what else is there?
So. Yeah, could I chime in with one thing?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say that, John, you raise a lot of. Good, you have a lot of good questions, and there are answers to all of your questions as to why. We've, why, what you're looking at is the way it looks at. Uh, that would take us another hour and a half to get into all of this.
I understand that, I do understand.
So those are certainly things that um, there were reasons, but uh, hopefully you can tell us those reasons are good or bad. Um, Sally, please.
Yeah, John, I just wanna make sure that you and all the other Z-Rack um applicants understand that. It's not just CBD or just North Main. The planning board has taken on a very ambitious, two projects that overlap. Um, one project is to follow up on a master plan. Um, uh, recommendation that we develop an economic opportunity area that is North Main Street. And another project is that we must respond to a state mandate to um, zone. For multifamily housing as of right in specific locations and in specific quantities in town. And the overlap is that one of the MBTA three A rules is that. At least half of what you decide to come up with has to be within a half-mile radius of the T, and so that's where the half-mile comes from, John. And when we draw that half-mile circle, it overlaps with the very, very small bottom part. Of the lower part of North Main Street from Skilling's up to Clark. So that will be one of the districts that will have this three A overlay. But the underlying GBD two and GBD three zoning will be updated to. Address goals that the master plan has, has cited and that we are advancing and we seek your support to. And help to advance. Um, and then the Z-Rack will also be helping us craft. Um, final language, or at least po- the policies and decisions that underlie the fi- final language. For what we submit to the s- uh, to town meeting to vote on, to put the three A zoning in place in time for. The state requirement. So it's two projects, but they have some overlap. Does that make sense?
To be part of that.
Yeah, right, that's.
You don't, you don't need to be a genius to do this.
We're not all rocket scientists, yes. Any um, Taylor, did, oh, your hand is up, Taylor, I'm sorry, it blends into your background, um, I apologies, um. Is. Are there any, uh, does that mean that we're done, Taylor? Yeah, okay, we're done, John. Um, I think, I think we're, we can, if you stick around and people have more questions, we'll get back to you, um. And uh, unfortunately. Thanks, I appreciate it, John. I, I can't read my own handwriting, Taylor, so will you let us know who's up next?
Yeah, we will move on to uh Hank, uh, since he need, need to leave early. Um, I wo- I do wanna ask the board if they want everyone to stick around. Is that something that they ask people to do, or can they leave after their interview?
I, I would say that if their time permits to hear the other um applicants' comments. Um, it might be edifying and instructive, but if your time does not permit, you're gonna have plenty of chances to get up to speed.
I would agree with that.
Um, I would add that one of our members, um, Carrie Layton is feeling ill, and so she's leaving her um camera off for now, but she, she is paying attention.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. Hope you feel better, Carrie.
Okay, great, so uh, we'll, we'll move on to um Hank Lynn. Thank you for joining us tonight. Please introduce yourself and let us know what uh spurred your interest uh in Z-Rack and why you think you'd be a, a good fit.
Uh, so can everyone hear me okay? Just wanted to make sure. Okay, uh, I think uh, so I'm trying to be, I think uh, volunteer in uh Z-Rack as a. Uh, kind of devil, devil's advocate. So, so I think also ki- uh, kinda echoing uh what John and. Sally just mentioned, so I particularly meant uh, kinda measured what would be the half-mile radius. So essentially uh covering uh to the age of Cock Street. So I essentially, that's a radius of uh, kind of half-mile. So I think that's really telling you uh, my commitment of. Uh, uh, trying to be, contribute to uh, the GBD two and the GBD zoning. As for Rassleton of uh, precinct eight. I think we have uh, moved to uh Ca- uh Canal Street. Uh, Canal Street, I think you probably know that's a street uh going to Lynch School. I think we have moved to Canal Street since two thousand and ten. So my uh, my kids attend, uh, have attended Lynch School. And I have been spending a lot of time driving on Main Street, sending my kids to. Uh, McCall and sending to uh, sending my kids to high school. And my older uh daughter, I think is going to graduate from high school next year, so going to college. Uh, but my kids still, uh, my younger son, I think is still going to stay in high school uh for another four years. So I think over the last ten years, I have seen changes uh on the Main Street. So not to mention a close uh Canal Street, I think they used to be a laundry shop. But it was closed a year ago. I think that shop still is empty and waiting for someone to rent that space. And uh, also along the Main Street, I think I have visited many shop of business. I think there are a couple shops really doing pretty well, I mean, including uh, I think from the corner. Uh, of the Main Street, a close stop and shop. So I visited that shop many times, that's the first auto. So I think many of the resident active visited shop, I think. They ran, they have been running a very good business. I think as well as a castle tires. I think I also visited the, they for a couple of ties. So I think they are sustain- sustainable business on the Main Street. However, they are also non-sustainable. However, they are also non-sustainable, su- sustainable business on main street such as what I mentioned. The laundry uh la- laundry shop a close the tree. Uh while uh a year ago it was closed, however, uh uh never been rented out again. And so I think there's, there's only there's an element to consider in terms of resoning and also attracting the business on main street. Uh, in terms of putting multiple unit, housing units on main street. I think you probably uh listen to presentation many, many times. So essentially, I think from the right, from the left side, I think the west side of main street. I think those parcel actually are really small. So it's very difficult for those smaller parcel, I think, beyond Cock Street to the border of Urban. So those smaller parcel is very difficult to assemble and give a multi-unit uh housings in those smaller parcel. Instead of kind of right side is uh the the west side of the main street. I think they, they are smaller, they are larger parcel, I think, which can be used as a multi uh unit, housing unit. So, and I think Sally also mentioned, I think if you consider what half mile of the radius, so essentially I would think uh so you should uh thinking the uh the west side, no, east side of, no, I should say east side of the larger parcel uh beyond Cock Street and continue to assemble those larger parcel for ma- uh multi-unit uh housing uh housing uh unit. So, and I think for some of town meeting member, you also understand my history getting some input to two thousand nineteen uh resoning process. Because essentially uh for GBD to GBD three uh to be considered as a com- commercial parcel. It used to be a very arbitrary uh two hundred yards from the center of the main street. I think uh so I think to for the two thousand nineteen resoning really uh making met the uh what the uh used to be commercial zoning parcel back to residential uh parcel uh what they used to be. So I didn't, uh I had been involved in kind of providing input for that, but I didn't also as a precinct A uh resident. Uh, so for GBD two and GBD three, if you're looking at coverage, actually, I would say precinct A covers seventy-five percent of the GB two and GBD three. So definitely, I think we need a voice from precinct A uh to really say what our uh preference and, and what our concern uh in terms of upcoming uh resoning. So I think that's my pitch.
Okay, thank you very much, Hank. And I should say that uh I live on Canal Street as well and I, I can wave at Hank when he goes to work. Um, we're that close. Um, so any questions for Hank, please?
No question, but just a comment that um really appreciate you applying, Hank, and I um can see that you're, you can understand the sort of micro, micro climates of, of the, the stretch. Um especially with so, so many different um age groups in your family, um utilizing the streets and um understanding the, the various nuances that many of us who don't live there um can, can only imagine. So I really am um, thank you for, for um putting in your time and, and applying. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I can add that I too am grateful um that you would step forward to help us with this project. Um, and that you touched on one of the topics that um it presents itself both as just a reality and an opportunity, which is that the east side and the west side of this one mile corridor um in specific areas are very different. Um, and it will require, as E Ching just said, sort of a, a a, a fine-toothed analysis of what is the best zoning. And one of the things that was recommended was the, the question of whether lot size would be a trigger, not recommended, but s- but put on the table for discussion whether lot size would be a trigger for certain zoning provisions. And so it's interesting that you would bring that up and I appreciate that and I thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Um, Taylor has his hand up, so I guess we, we have to move on. Thank you, Hank. Taylor, please.
Uh, next we have uh Tommy, please introduce yourself. Uh, let us know what sparked your interest in the Z RAC. Um, also, I do want to let anyone know that if you have any time constraints for the remainder of the evening, um please raise your hand and we'll get to you after Tommy's. Tommy, floor is yours.
Yeah, um, thank you, Taylor. Um, I am Tommy Belair. I live at one thirty-six Highland Avenue um in precinct two. And I'm really interested in joining the Z RAC for a number of reasons. Firstly, um, I just graduated undergrad. I studied economics and urban studies and saw this opportunity to kind of apply those skills that I learned in college um back to my own community. And specifically as someone um with a lot of this North Main Street corridor within my precinct and as someone who's kind of like grown up um going down the streets and also living in Winchester and coming back with new context and kind of new background as someone who just finished studying urban studies and urban planning. Um, I'm really excited to apply those sorts of skills and learnings to this Winchester context and kind of um give back to the community in a way. Um, in terms of like kind of what issues I'm most interested in, in terms of uh the corridor itself and also this um MBTA three A um act that was just passed by the state. Um, I'm really interested in providing um opportunities for increased residential development along the corridor. I think that's um this zoning, uh this MBTE, MBTA act enabled us to really um provides more vibrancy um to the town with more residents kind of walking downtown. With like more residences being there and also the opportunity to have more affordable units in town, I think is wonderful in terms of um creating a more diverse Winchester. Um, I think that, that, that's a big priority to me. Um, as someone who um found Winchester to be a little bit monotonous in terms of diversity. Uh, growing up here, I find that um initiatives like these to promote that are very important. I think that uh as well, um, kind of like creating zoning provisions that really kind of cultivates and promotes um the character of Winchester, like our downtown area um is like very, very much has a lot of brick buildings and a lot of history. And so I'd want to create zoning that enables these new buildings to um blend in and also add a little bit of character to um both these um this, the business district and also this North Main corridor. And um to kind of enable the um, the character of uh downtown Winchester to kind of extend up the corridor as well. Um, I want to leave a lot of time for questions, um, but I think that's the broad overview of kind of why I'm here.
Uh, well, thank you very much, Tommy. Uh, really appreciate it and your enthusiasm coming straight out of school, I think is, is really welcome. I'm not sure I was that enthused coming out of undergrad, but so are there, I, I noticed that there are a couple of people who um do have time constraints, so we'll be getting to you um pretty quickly. Uh, any questions for Tommy, please, from the board?
Um, I keep speaking, but um I just want to, I thank you for, for applying. And I'm so thrilled um to bring more design professionals in um to, to this where the rubber meets the road. Um, and how, how it actually works in real life. I, I'm really excited that you bring those skills. Um, I'm also thrilled um that you're, you're coming in after school in a new generation of, I think with a lot of challenges before you of housing and, and um you know, climate change stuff and, and transit issues that are before you. And this stuff is sort of the code that will determine change in the next ten, twenty years, which will be very much um for you guys. And um I just, I'm really thrilled that um you're here.
Yes, and I wanted to um add upon that point that I really want to like represent and add a voice to this um generation that like I'm in that uh isn't really involved as much in um local government. And so trying to kind of really try to represent that voice as best as I can. Um, as someone who um just uh who's like a twenty-something, um, I think is one of the key values and key assets I think I bring to the table. And um, thank you for bringing that up, E Ching.
And I, I would just add that I appreciate your um, your, your, sort of your list of, of things that you would hope that the zoning would do, including increasing the diversity of Winchester. Um, and that new buildings would blend in and add character. And I guess it's and/or add character. Um, because sometimes things can be different, but still be character building. Um, and I like that you have cited the vision of the CBD vitality moving up that one mile corridor. Um, so, and yes, I think it's great that you are right out of college and planning, studying, planning, interested. There's a shortage of planners in the country because every state is dealing with housing issues, so you chose a good path. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Surprisingly, Taylor doesn't have his hand up. Oh, no, just went up. Oh, so, um. If uh if you stick around, maybe if there are any other questions, um.
Yeah, Wenji has her hand up.
Yes, I know. Taylor is uh, Taylor is uh managing uh who's coming up next. So Taylor, please, floor is yours.
Um, thank you, Tommy. So uh Wenji and Steve, I believe that you both raised your hand asking about time. Please let us know what time you need to leave tonight.
Actually, the, this is Stevie. I, I can, I can go till whenever.
Okay.
Put my hand up on mistake, so. You can keep me wherever you were slotting me.
So, so why don't we have Wenji um next then? They're almost.
Thanks for being flexible. Hi, um, it's very nice seeing so many board members of, on the planning board and a diverse group of applicants. Um, it's very interesting to hear people's different perspectives. Um, so I'm a licensed architect with eight years of working experience, currently working at Piet um, a national award-winning firm focused on science and healthcare design. And previously I worked on at Shepley Bovins. Um, so I'm trained in architecture um and urban design. And um I moved to Winchester last year from Somerville. And um it feels really different. Uh, even though it's not very far away from Somerville, like I have seen the changes in Somerville in the past seven years and um, a lot of development. And I really wish we can move on for some positive changes here. Uh, my kid goes to daycare at Creative Corner and I don't know if any of you have walked from place near Weshmere all the way along Main Street to um Cross Street where my kids daycare is. Um, the streetscape just feels so different after you pass the town center. Um, it feels like two different worlds and um it feels like on the north part of the main street, it does not feel like a place for people, but more for cars and trucks pass by and nobody really wants to stop there and pushing a stroller there is a nightmare. So I, I, I'm always afraid my kid be hit by a car or something. So we're driving um more, of course, but occasionally like when our car has problem, we have to walk there and it's really hard. Um, so there are tons of opportunities in housing as well. Um, so my mom, she, she's from China and um in the future, we want her to stay with us, but uh houses here are super expensive and she's not looking to live in a mansion, but there are not many options for multifamily, smaller unit uh for seniors. And also for younger generation too, I have some friends who really likes Winchester's education system, but they just either can't afford to live here or can't find any uh o- any opportunities uh because there are not many houses in the market. What else? And um I would be very excited to apply my knowledge in architecture and urban design to help uh weigh in zoning and design guidelines. Uh, it's also an opportunity for, uh as E Ching mentioned, the climate change and sustainability. Because ob- obviously, single-family lifestyle um is very, is not sustainable. And you're always have to mow the lawn and um it, you are spending so much more energy in heating and cooling. While if you're living a more compact unit and you um, and also if you have all the amenities and commercial opportunities around, you don't need to rely on cars. And uh always you can hop on the commuter rail to the city. Um, also a lot of you work from home nowadays, the, I see the local business can have a lot of opportunities for people to still meet and work and um get involved in communities. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, and I, I live, I live on Canal Street, just a, a block away from North Main. So I can appreciate the, the challenge it is for you to navigate that with a baby stroller. I, I, I'm impressed at your courage. So um, any, any uh questions from the board, please?
I'm, I'm happy to, but I'm, I'm speaking so much if anybody else. Okay, alright. So um, thank you so much, Wenji, for coming and I, I really appreciate you applying. Um, uh, just the disclosure to everyone, my husband actually works with Wenji um at Piet and, and um non-biased, but they are excellent firm. Um, and they're, they're very, very um cognizant, some of the, some of the um forethinking folks on sustainable architecture and design. And I um really appreciate that kind of professionalism and a, a understanding of those nuances of design and um how to build large-scale you know, master plans as well as, you know, buildings and, and systems to, to address human needs um as well as the environment. And so I think um Wenji, uh, you're, I think your um knowledge will be very, very um helpful to especially the design review guidelines. I think that, that is one of our challenges here for um to, to understand how we are able to um control some of the growth without, without sacrificing the um maybe encouraging some of the investment. So, so how do we, how we build that character in a way that um many will, will appreciate in, in a very long time and, but, but also address some of the very crucial needs that we have in housing and transit. Um, so thank you.
Thank you. I see a great opportunity and we see a lot of some other towns who, which have done excellent jobs already and um build a vibrant community that's adapted to the current li- lifestyle and also respects the historic character. So I would be excited to work on Z RAC. Thank you, everyone.
And, and I, and I would just add that one of the prescriptions that we will all be working on is that the new zoning for the center business district, multifamily housing by right um will, includes design standards and the North Main Street project includes design standards. But specifically in the case of the three A multifamily housing districts, the ta- this, the Commonwealth has said that, that our design standards can be neither overly prescriptive nor overly subjective. So I just put that out there for you to lose sleep over. Um, and um I thank you also, Wenji, for applying. I'm really excited that you would be part of this team.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Wenji. And Sally, we're supposed to not make them lose sleep. This is supposed to be a fun thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking about myself. I.
Okay. Um, Taylor, please.
Uh, next we have Steve.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Uh, first of all, thanks for, for having us on. Uh, I guess I'll start by um, uh, first of all, there've been some really great comments and I don't want to repeat them all, but I love the different, the varying views. Uh, I'll start with Sally's point. I think the reason why I'm here is because what you're embarking on is a remarkably ambitious opportunity for the town. Uh, zoning creates, uh, you know, allows people to build buildings that last for decades, if not centuries. And we have lots of buildings in this town that are uh centuries old. I also uh love the fact that uh someone like Lance, who has an understanding of the history, would volunteer someone like John, who is in the midst and owns uh buildings in this town and would be directly affected as a business owner. Uh, so I think that's great. And then we on. So I think that's great. And then we, on the other side, we had Tommy and Wenji, who are sort of looking much younger than me and looking at it from a very different perspective. So I've lived in this town for more than 25 years. I brought my kids up in this town. They're now working through the end parts of college. I'm a precinct one member. You know, we, I've, I've actually worked in this town, I've worked from home since 2002. So I was doing it before it became cool. And I'm an attorney by background. I, I have always been interested in urban planning. I've owned two houses that are over 100 years old, so I love the history of buildings. I think Mass for Massachusetts, the housing issue is the issue of the day. I understand people would argue that environmental issues are the issues of the day, but for a town, for a state, where our housing is one of the highest in the country and we expect to be an innovative economy that brings in young people. If we don't solve our housing problem, we're not solving, we're not going to be able to continue to be what we are. I, so again, I'm an attorney by background. I represent small companies, small tech companies. I think my role, if I were to be part of the committee, would be less on the expertise. The other people on this committee, everybody who's spoken so far is probably much more of an expert than I am. But I've spent my career trying to help businesses and my clients do the impossible and work in collaborative situations where they are often without leverage. And so they must find ways to make win-wins for everyone. And so my goal here would be less about pushing forward my views, which although I do have a lot of them, as someone who's lived and worked here for more than 20 years, but more about understanding where everyone else is coming from and what they're trying to do. We spend a lot of time watching town meetings or town events in this house. So I'm very up to speed on a lot of what has happened and what goes on and how the town works. And I would love to be able to help in some way.
Thank you, Steve. Really appreciate that. But as a, and I'm, I'm, I'm glad that after all these years of Washington meeting, you're still interested in being part of the. Now you get to make the sausage.
I don't know about that, but I've watched a lot of meetings and I'm always so impressed with the volunteer work that everybody does. So if I could help in some ways, that'd be great.
That's great. And so are there any questions from the board, please?
I'll continue. I was wondering when a lawyer will show up, but I'm glad to see one here in, in this committee. I, I think that there's a lot of them in town meeting. And I think that, you know, coming new to town meeting, it is interesting that it's such an organism and, and a way of thinking and working that needs some institutional knowledge and, and needs some, you know, understanding of how to get something through, how, how to win some arguments, how to, how to make compromises. And I really appreciate that from your perspective too. So thank you.
Yes, and I would say Yiching raises a really good point, that a lawyerly approach to making the case will be something that will be helpful to us. And I see Taylor's hand is raised.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Taylor, thank you, Steve. I think we're gonna, we're going. I hope that there are questions being held on to the end. I know Nick was, was hoping to do that. So Nick, I hope you've got a list of questions. Taylor, we're going to move on to our next.
I'm relying on Yiching. I think she's doing a good job.
Yes, Yiching has been doing the, the work of all of us. Thank you so much.
I don't have a list of questions.
Taylor, please.
Next, we have Marilyn. Please introduce herself. Let us know what sparked your interest in joining ZERAC. I think you're on mute, Marilyn.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Gagales and I live at 34 Tufts Road. I've been a longtime resident, first-time town meeting member right now and have reached the age where I've retired. And I, it's time for me to start, begin or begin a resurgence of my community service. And that's why I have decided to apply for this for, for many reasons. I have seen this town change. I have seen North Main Street change. I know what it can be, what, what it really, how vibrant it can be with the people in the neighborhood and the businesses. It's, to me, it's a sad area right now. I think what the town is desperately in need of upgraded zoning and enforcement of the zoning, which sometimes I don't think always happens. Now, I'm not an architect. I'm not an engineer. I'm not a planner. I'm not an attorney. I'm a retired librarian, but my expertise and my contribution to this could potentially be that I work very well with community groups. I'm used to organizing large events. I work for the Cambridge Public Library. And outreach and planning events and working collaboratively with other community groups was one of my forties. And I, I seem to be able to manage meetings. And I know public meetings will be a good part of this. And explaining things in a clear manner to people who don't understand zoning. I don't know all the zoning. I don't know everything. My mother, however, did work for the building department for 25 years and did know all the zoning. And as a matter of fact, there are contractors in town who still come up to me and remember my mother's advice. So she taught me the importance of, of zoning for a town to, to maintain its resilience and to maintain the integrity of the town, but also it needs to change. And it needs to involve a different groups of people and it needs to move forward. And North Main Street is one of those areas where I feel we need great improvement and I'd really be delighted to be part of the catalyst to make that begin to happen.
Okay. Thank you very much, Marilyn. You have a great skill set. Not all of us are lawyers, architects, or urban planners. So welcome. Any, any questions or comments from the board, please, from Marilyn?
Yeah, I'll just say that librarians are the heroes of this, this time. I really appreciate your work there. You guys have a lot going on there. And so I, I want to, I, it seems like you're very positive and have, have a way of being with people that, that will, will be very optimistic and hopeful. So I appreciate that from you and I'm really thankful that you applied.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I would just add, as Diab noted, that your skill set, as you recited it, is incredibly useful to this project. So it's great that you applied. Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Yeah, I, I want to, I want to second Yiching's comments about librarians. I, I really, you know, as a curator of knowledge and the ability to lead people to where they need to go to learn things, librarians have always had my respect. So not, not that to the other people. I like, like, I like attorneys and, you know, urban planners and architects as well, but librarians are special, so.
Thank you.
So Taylor, I think we've reached, you haven't even put your hand up yet, so we must be doing.
Well, we have one more thirty seconds, but it was a great interview. That's why we got to end a little bit early. Thank you very much, Marilyn. Really great to hear from, from, from you and your, your, your interest. And last, we have Sumya. I believe that that's how it's pronounced. Please correct me if, if I'm wrong in the pronunciation of your name. Please introduce yourself and let us know what sparked your interest in ZERAC.
Hi, my name is Somi Ganapathy. Thank you for this opportunity to, for this attempt to be on ZERAC. I, I was in precinct two and I was interested in applying for this position mainly because the North Main Street area would really benefit from being more revitalized. On, I, I live on Prue Street and it's in between Washington and Main Street. And you see kids walking, I usually walk up Main Street to the Fells or from Swanton to the Fells. And it, it would be nice to redevelop this part of town. My, my interests are in having a more walkable area, something that reflects some of our master plan for the town, small businesses and also affordable housing and taking cyclists and other parts of the transportation plan into consideration as well. And I think what I would bring to the, to the group is, I'm not an urban planner or an architect, but I do live in the area and I do work well in collaborative settings as well. So that's one of the reasons I did apply. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Thank you very much for applying. I was gonna look back at your application. Did you say that you were on the Waterfield Task Force?
Uh, ye- yes, I was.
I thought you were and I, I appreciate that you would, would continue working on another task force after that one. That was, that was a very high-pressure situation. So I, I really thank you very much for, for volunteering for that one. I, I hope the ZERAC is a little less intense for that reason. Are there any questions for Sumya, please, from the board?
So I agree with you, Diab. I think Somi's participation in Waterfield actually just solidifies her abilities to work with people. I think that was, that was a very difficult task and I really thank you for that work. It, it was a very, it was one of, it was the time that I first entered into planning board and just seeing the amount of heat that, that was generated from that was, was, made me want to run. But, but I thank you also for coming back and I think you're, you're raising the point of transit as being very important to this, this project is huge because that area is, 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 you know, being thought of as development, but without, without a real thinking through of transit and, and how to, how to make it safe and pleasurable for people to be on the street and to want to be on the street and for, for economic reasons is, is huge. And I hope that that will be one of the emphasis of this, these discussions. So, thank you, Somi.
And, and I would, I would just echo what Yiching said about the importance of, of providing for safe and pleasurable transit up and down North Main Street. One of our consultants was helping with this large project. Provided a lot of information to Winchester on complete street redesign for that corridor. And I'm not exactly sure how that will be implemented, but it can hopefully be baked into our design standards and perhaps into incentives for developers. So safer cycling, safer pedestrian ways. And also the fact that it is a bus corridor means that, and that there's a huge population of people who could live there and not rely as much on cars. So I think that your thoughts are right in line with where we've been trying to explore options. So thank you, Somi, for coming tonight, being here.
Yes, thank you. And Taylor's hand is up, so I think we are, Taylor, are we, did we get everyone?
Yep, yep, we've concluded.
And I would add, Diab, that we're waiting for two appointees from two allied boards in town, right?
Right. We are, we are, the Design Review Committee and the Historical Commission will be appointing members. So I, I would like to start off my remarks by saying I'm incredibly humbled by the, the people who have volunteered for this. It's, it's, you are all incredibly impressive, both in what your, your credentials, but also the enthusiasm and the willingness you have to lead us on this, this journey. And, you know, as many of you pointed out, the zoning sets the stage for what's going to happen over the next few decades. And this is, you know, zoning is a very forward-looking proposition. And the enthusiasm you have for the future, I think, is, is really great. And to someone who's a little jaded from being on the planning board for a while, it's really great to hear all of that enthusiasm. So really, so any, so why don't we open this up to the board? To be honest, I think that we have, I don't know that we have, we don't have to make a choice. We have a number of really excellent candidates and I would welcome them all. And so let's open up to the board. I can't see any of you right now.
Well, if we could hear from Carrie and Nick, because Yiching and I have been so loquacious.
They did such a good job of leaving the questioning in the comments. I thank both of you for that. And I'm really excited to see the, the cross-section of the town that's represented in our volunteers here. And I think we have, we have a lot to look forward to in terms of the parameters that we're going to have for North Main. And I'm really excited to work with all the people that we've heard from.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Nick. I'm not sure not Nick, you're Carrie. I'm looking at Nick. Thank you, Carrie. Nick?
I, I guess I would, I would echo that. I mean, I'm not sure what we're, we're looking to do. I mean, I think all except one member seemed fairly independent. And, you know, I thought one member had some personal agenda issues that I think might create conflict. But in general, I think I'm, I'm excited that such a diverse group is assembled. And I think we have a lot of work to do going ahead. It's gonna be a fine balancing act to achieve all of our goals. From revitalizing the center to kind of retaining the historic-looking feel of the town, to increasing the amount of housing that is affordable. I think these are all important objectives and I think we've, we've got our work cut out for us to come up with something that's gonna be satisfactory to town meeting when we, when we come to a vote.
Okay, so, so my, 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 so, you know, we're five of us on the board and we did our, our, we had originally talked about, well, we first talked about a small group of people and then we expanded it to the board. And so we're talking about the ZERAC. So I think we were, we were looking at, you know, around nine-plus people. I can't do math these days, so let me try counting.
I think it would be ten.
Yes, I think it's the right value. Ten in total, ten in total, including historical and design review.
That's correct.
And I think, you know, I think that the key to my mind is that we have, this is an incredibly diverse set of people, which I think is really important. We do have a lot of people who are along the North Main Street corridor, which I think is important. We do have people who, who are more towards the southern part and looking at the, the three A CBD part. So I really would welcome all of these people to be part of the ZERAC. And so as, as chair, I can't make a motion, but I would, I would, I would support a motion which would just appoint all of these people.
Yeah, can I ask a quick question, not to take us on a tangent, but who, who chairs, who sort of like coordinates this, this, this group?
Good question.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that would be my concern too. I think that it's wonderful that, that we have such a diverse group. But to make it efficient, effective, I think we do need a strong, some strong leadership.
I, I think I, I am sort of feeding off Nick's observation that there's, that there could be different agendas that are there. And I think that, you know, master plan brought together lots of different agendas. I think every commission has their agendas, but I think the, the parameters of the meetings are important. Sort of how much time is allotted to discussion, how moves, you know, how measures move forward or don't move forward. And if those, I don't know who's going to decide those rules and how much time might be lost to that. That's mostly what's motivating my question.
So I, I have, I am under the impression that the two consultants. So I I have, I am under the impression that the two consultants who have joined forces to help us through these two massive projects. And I should say who they are. It's Form and Place out of Newton, which is Michael Wang and John Ruffo. And it's Innis Associates Principal Emily Innis, I N N E S. And it's primarily Michael and Emily who are working with us to plan and implement all the steps to get us to a successful vote at Springtown Meeting. And I'm really hoping, expecting that their strong experience leading advisory committees, zoning advisory committees will come to bear on this. In fact, it was it was their joint proposal suggestion to create the Z-Rack, which the board embraced.
But they they are our consultants. And I wonder, like, a a government of the people with with this committee, this committee being formed, that whether or not they all can have votes, right? Their their own individual votes and they can they can vote to have somebody chair or vice chair, right? And and to determine how to do that.
Yes, I think so too.
Yeah, I I would, I think that going forward, Emily in particular, I think will be a very important part of how the Z-Rack works. And I'm committed to be at the Z-Rack meetings to provide some continuity and to help the Z-Rack organize, as it were, and to help set up, you know, we will have things like we would like to have opinions and reports coming out of the Z-Rack in a timely fashion, so they meld well with our progress towards town meeting. So I think that there will be structure and we will help form that structure. So I I appreciate the concerns. I think it's it's, I think we I don't, I couldn't point you to a document right now, which would say how we'll be doing it. I think Emily is probably the person who best understands, since she has worked with so many other organizations, how this will move forward.
I think we, I I think we should also note that, you know, the the Z-Rack will make recommendations, but the board is will be voting and will have the final say in terms of what we end up with.
Yep.
I just really wanted to apologize for the volunteers. It's a great group. It sounds like it will be. And if if it's time to make a motion, I'm happy to move to accept our applicants.
All right, I just wanna mention just one thing before, just just for clarification, there goes the balloons again.
The balloons are hilarious. Wrong timing.
Do you know why you're triggering this?
I think it's some some Mac thing. I don't know. It only started after I updated my 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 computer. So I will, so although the consultants are are gonna be kind of like managing the 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 structure of 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 the meetings, I will be doing the day to day of 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 everything else. And we have the opportunity, and this is this is kind of our plan right now, but we have the the opportunity to discuss it, to run Z-Racks as planning board meetings. So, for example, like next week's meeting, the Z-Rack is at a planning board meeting. So we all have the opportunity to participate, to 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 be in it. So I just wanna make sure that that everyone knows that it's not like this. The Z-Rack's gonna go off and we don't hear from them until once in a while, we have an opportunity to to participate in it, our our ourselves.
Okay, thank you. That does provide more clarity.
So did we get a second on Carrie's?
So there is this up, Lance has his hand up. We will, Lance, go ahead, please.
Our buttons here. If this is run as a formal advisory committee to the planning board, my guess is that you will fall under the open meeting law requirements. And we should probably make that clear to everybody, because it's a bit of an onerous set of requirements. And Taylor will wind up having to advertise all our meetings and keep minutes and such like that. So it's it's not a simple process, once you're convened as a formal advisory committee. Mary Ellen Lannan, the town clerk, can provide all the background information we want, but that's just a piece of homework. It's a background work that's gonna have to be done.
Right, thank you, Lance. Just for those who are unfamiliar with the open meeting law. Essentially, it means that all of the discussions of this board will be done in public. And we will keep minutes of the discussions that that not at a really detailed level, not a word by word, but we'll keep track of discussions and votes. And that all that we, under open meeting law, we don't speak with each other outside of the meetings. So that all of our, any sort of work we do is always in front of the public, so that everyone can see what we're doing. That's the the intent is so that we're as transparent as possible. So thanks, Lance, for bringing that up. We had, we had planned on on always posting these meetings. So we will.
And and Diab, I I would add to the open meeting law prescriptions that if you have serial communications, like I call Yiching and I say, we really gotta do this. And then I call Nick and I say, we really gotta do this. And I go right through the board. That's serial communication. However, the planning board does have two person teams assigned to ta- tackle particular topics and then come back to the board with a report. And that is not a violation of open meeting law. Is that correct, Diab, if you have two people?
Uh, well, the key is that you are not, that you do not have a quorum and that you are not making policy decisions. I mean, the the key is that we want all all discussions about policy and things like that to be in public and out in the open. So we will make sure that everyone on the on the Z-Rack is gets the information they need so that we can keep this an open process. So.
I think Mary Ellen has an online training you can run through.
Yeah, yeah, we will, we will make sure of that. But you are correct, Sally. We do have a motion. Carrie may raise the, you know, she made the motion to accept everyone. Is there a second?
I'm happy to second that motion to accept all applicants to the Z-Rack.
Excellent. So we will have a roll call vote. Sally Dale.
With gratitude and enthusiasm, yes.
Uh, Nick Rosettos.
Aye.
Carrie Leighton.
Aye.
Yiching Scott.
Aye.
And I say aye as well. I cannot thank everyone enough about your willingness to come forward and help us with this effort. I think it's going to be a really, well, for us, it's incredibly useful. It's incredibly exciting. And I'm really looking forward to working with all of you and all of the skills you're going to bring and enthusiasm you bring. So we are having a next, our next expository meeting for the Z-Rack is next Tuesday, where it'll, I believe it begins at seven P M. It's it's virtual. It will be recorded if you can't make it. And that's where our part two of with Emily Innis, our consultant, will be talking all about what the M B T three A, M B T A three A zoning initiative means, where it comes from, what its impacts are. And we've got a good hour and a half set aside for that next week. So it should be really interesting. Emily is a great educator and she will do a fantastic job. So I hope you can all join us in person next Tuesday evening. Or at least catch it on on replay.
Yeah, it will be a really excellent tutorial coming from from Emily. She actually was on the team at the state level that created three A and the guidelines that the communities have to follow to comply. She's an incredibly knowledgeable and lucid person. So we're really lucky to have her help. So either zoom in or watch the video. It's gonna be very educational. And it's the twenty fourth at seven P M, Diab.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you all. And then we turn back to our standard planning board business. We have just a few other things on the agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanna point out, I will be in touch with everyone here tonight with more details tomorrow morning. Thank you for joining us.
Yep, thank you, Taylor. I always forget the details.
Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, everyone. So what, could you put up our agenda, Taylor?
Yes, so we 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 do have to be five minutes before our agenda adjourned, but.
Right, so I I I recall saying last week that I would try to get to you a draft of the report to town meeting. Unfortunately, that did not happen and I apologize for that. It's just life has not been conducive to me getting to that. So what I hope to do is to get you something by our packet this Friday. It's for you to review over the weekend. And if you would want to send any comments on it to Taylor, we can put them together for a revised presentation next Tuesday. So I'm committed to get you something. If it doesn't come out on the packet Friday morning, I will get it to via email to the board. But again, comments on that should go directly to Taylor and not to me, so that we keep this above board. So I apologize again for that. But we are gonna talk about marketing materials and I'm out of sync here, but I'll get my mea culpa's out first. So Taylor, do you wanna put up our?
Yeah, give me one sec. Sorry. Just to remind everyone, these are the slogans. And the Planning Board banner. I don't know if if everyone has had an opportunity to to look at all of it, but I think one one discussion to have as I pull this up is what are our thoughts after thinking about it over a week about a slogan?
So Taylor, you're not sharing right now. Did you mean to?
I know, I'm pulling up the 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 information. In the meantime, what do we think about the idea of having a slogan for the planning board? And what should it be?
So we asked last, we asked ourselves last time we discussed this. Why would we have a slogan and what message might it convey? And the only, as I looked at the options that came forward that and you're in the process of pulling up, my question is, can we make one that is not timeless, nothing's timeless, but well, some things are, Mona Lisa. But to make it, to make a a statement that communicates what we wanna say to our community in a way that will endure through the next ten, fifteen years of of change and hard work to keep the town livable and beautiful.
Well, I think the 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 question, so I think those words mean different things to everyone. And so I'm not, and so I think that capturing those in a slogan other than saying the un- unless we say exactly those words, which I think are great words, but livable and I think that that's that's the challenge we have. And I know that, I don't know that we can, that's my, I I'm I'm a little ambivalent about the slogan in that I don't know how we capture everything we wanna say in five or six words.
I am stuck on the timeliness of it too, Sally. I just think that it is so hard for us to come to the right idea of what these words mean already. That I I just think that it won't last. And I it there, I think it will get dated. I I don't think that I can commit to any of those right now either. I just, I think that they're either too meaningless or too specific. You know, like it, they're they're they just don't feel totally right. And I I think that the timelessness part of it is that it's gonna be a planning board. Now it's gonna be probably a planning board in twenty years. And so that's that's what we have and it's a great logo. Maybe that we we can be happy with that.
Yeah, that that's kind of where I was leaning. And Taylor, do you have the graphic options that our designer sent us for the banner that we're down to a couple of different versions? There, they are.
Sorry, the quality is bad. It's just because I've blown it up so much.
Yeah. So my thoughts on this were that so if 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 we went the direction that Yiching and I were leaning, then the bottom of the banner would not have a band of text in it. A band with text in it. And 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 if that were the case, then it would be a white banner with the white just bleeding off the edges like that. And then the word Winchester dot U S, which is to identify with the seal would move up or something. I just, I I have to understand what it would be. But if we did have a slogan, I would prefer the lower one. But if we don't, I have to see what it would look like without that bar, I guess.
Could you have the colors without the slogan?
We could have the bar without the slogan, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I I mean, I I would vote for the top one. Just the look of it appeals to me. The Winchester dot U S pops out with the green and it and it carries off the the seal. Winchester U S seems, looks like a little bigger in this case. I I'd like to see the top one without the slogan, but with the blue and the green and the Winchester dot U S.
I mean, I, when I look at the yeah, I I don't know. I I'm not attached with slogan. I think the, I think the comments about being sloganless are are good.
I I I think from, I mean, I could have said this last week, but I think that if if we do a slogan now is not the right time for it. So so I think that if we continue to move move on without the idea of we're gonna put a slogan on our banner, I think that that sounds like the right choice. I I do just wanna say that I don't, maybe we could say something like learn more at Winchester dot U S. I don't know. I I just wanna throw something out there.
So I
I do like having the colored ba- bar across the bottom. So I think that it's real estate that we can think about using wisely.
Nick, can you, I'm sorry, I'm I'm really struggling to grab stuff. But can you describe what you just would have made for changes again?
Me? Yeah, so I I would keep the top banner and just get rid of the shaping Winchester future and just have that as blue and then have the green side. I like, I like the green. It pops out and it and it kind of carries the color from the seal. The Winchester dot U S looks looks bigger to me than the bottom one. I'd like to see the top one just without the slogan, but with the colors and the and the band at the bottom.
And didn't you make a suggestion about for more information, visit? Was that you that just said that?
It was Taylor.
I know, I said that.
But when you said that, Taylor, I think that the Winchester dot U S, the the website is actually a good one. That that inclusion at the banner actually says a different information than what everything else is saying. Because it shows you where to find information already. But for me, the top, the green and the blue banner at the bottom, it it separates the old logo with the new logo a little bit too much. It's, it it seems like two things. Whereas a continuous blue banner actually incorporates the two together. And maybe if if the Winchester dot U S looks bigger to you, maybe we just increase the font of that font size of the of the website down there.
Yeah, I mean, they they both, I think, would do the job.
Yeah, I mean, um, they, they both, I think would do the job.
So at least, oh, Deib, go ahead.
I just want to say that, um, I, I, I think, I agree that removing the slogan makes sense. I like retaining the bottom border. I kind of tend towards what Yiching was saying is, is going towards the bottom one because it, it does look, if you, if you divide the colors in the bottom banner, it's almost like you have two different things kind of glued together with the continuous color on the bottom. I think it provides, you know, it, it attaches the two parts. So I agree with you, Nick. It does look like.
I could be convinced. I mean, it's, it's kind of gut reaction versus on, on second thought.
I, I agree that, that the Winchester dot U S does look larger against the green, which, so I agree, maybe making that a little bigger, um, would make sense if we're going to go with the blue. Um, I don't know what to do with the empty space on the lower left part of the banner. Um, you know, it's.
So.
I mean, it could be just a blue band that.
It could be a blue band. Maybe there's some simple graphic. I don't know. That's, that's not my forte, but yeah. My only concern would be without the, without the slogan, it will, it will not be balanced. So something there which might balance it might be useful.
So Winchester dot U S, um, would be a reference to a, a particular website. Um, and I know the town is working very hard to make our town website more intuitively navigable. But does it make sense to put in the left side, um, whatever comes up in your URL when you are right at the landing page of the Winchester Planning Board?
Um, so three months ago, I would have said yes.
Ugly URL.
It's long and ugly and it sometimes changes.
Uh, yeah, I see.
So, so, uh, you know, one of the things I think we should leave up to Reagan maybe is to whether or not, um, we move Winchester dot U S to the middle of that banner, of, of the bar at the bottom to make it symmetric. I mean, I think, I think once she gets the idea that we don't want the logo, she'll come up with some way of balancing the design.
The slogan.
Yes, right. Thank you. The slogan. Once we get rid of the slogan, she'll come up with some way of balancing the design.
And the other thing I wanted to say was that I think the town seal could be a little bit larger. It's difficult to read, um, even when it's blown up.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a, that's a good point.
If you, if you take the measurement between the top of the W of the green Winchester and the bottom of the B of board, that's a certain dimension and the seal seems a little bit smaller than that dimension. Um, so, uh, again, I defer to our graphic designer, Reagan. Um, and I'm sorry to see the little grid of colored dots go, um, but I understand.
Oh, we can still have it. I, I, so, so the good news on the logo is that, um, the town has agreed to, um, have Reagan actually generate a scalable image. Currently, the, the town logo, I should say, the town logo is currently this thing that was scanned and is pixelized. And Reagan has done some work to make it legible at a 12 by 12 size. And the town has agreed to, to have her actually turn it into a scalable graphic, which you can then make larger. I think part of the issue, and the part of the issue with the town's logo is it's an incredibly hard thing to read, even when it's, you know, a foot by a foot. It's just a complicated thing. So, um, but we should be able to make it larger if we have a scale.
I would like that. And I like the idea of just having Winchester dot U S at the bottom. And if we can keep our little colorful grid, I think that's cool too.
I really like the colorful grid. I think it looks cool.
I think it shows energy and goodness knows that the interviews that we had tonight contained lots of energy.
So do we, so I guess, um, do we have somewhat of a consensus that we're going to remove the slogan and ask Reagan to make the bottom one as balanced as she can and.
That sounds fine to me.
We'll increase the size of the Winchester dot U S and, um, ask her to make the town logo larger. I think it might be as, no, yeah, we'll just ask her to make the town logo larger.
Yeah. And I think it's coming, it's just great to have a banner and we'll be able to use it, um, every place where the planning board is, um, a public entity. Live public entity or even virtual.
Okay, um, I think we're, we're good.
Great.
And I think that's it. We're, um, thank you all. Um, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Still moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please. Uh, Carrie.
Aye, and thank you for your patience with me tonight.
Thank you, Carrie. Thanks for sticking around. Hope you feel better. Um, Sally.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Yiching.
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you, everyone, for being with us this evening. Thank you, Windcam. Thank you to Recording Secretary Nancy Polkary. Thanks, Taylor Herman. Thanks to Steve, who's stuck around.
He's stuck around.
Yeah. Um, thanks to everyone out there in TV land. And we will see you all hopefully next week at seven P M for the, uh, next exposition on, uh, M B T three A and Winchester and how we achieve compliance. Have a great week, everyone. Uh, we'll see you next week.
See y'all. Bye bye.
Bye.